The nineteen four meeting order, stand for pledge please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the following for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whom we testify.
Okay, we don't have any orders for the day. Okay, we have approval of minutes for the April twenty first regular board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April twenty first meeting.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval vouchers, vouchers as audited, eighty-three thousand for the general fund, eighty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and ninety-six cents. Capital fund, seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, ninety-two cents. The water fund, thirty thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty cents. And sewer fund, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and forty-six cents. I move that these be, I move these be approved as audited.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unfinished business, Five Streets Facility construction project.
Give you guys a little update, Highlander has been out there working on various punchless items and cleanup work. I think as of tomorrow, they're going to be moving out for a few weeks onto another job. They're waiting on the railroad to come in and complete installation of the tracks on Trinity and Shady. They'd like to wait for that until, before they...
Before they get too far away, Kevin. I know we got contractors meeting tomorrow, I plan on bringing up that.
We do, yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, Billy doesn't have to wait for the railroad. The railroad will have to marry up to Highlander's blacktop. We need this project done, we're not going to wait for the railroad. Unless they're in here next week.
Our inspector did see them on site today, and they did say they should be in the next two to three weeks.
Can I ask a question?
They're going to be here sooner than that.
Joe, can I ask a question? Are we still holding the bond up?
Oh, we still unhold the Highlander money, yeah. But, Dan, I don't...
I know, I get it, but...
This project needs to be wrapped up by the first of the lot.
Should have been wrapped up along, I agree with you. But, they want to play that game, we've got the bond. But I'm with you, Joe, but we got the bond, so it's in their court.
I mean, they basically want a completion letter, we're not good enough to go to completion.
Bingo.
Right, I guess, Dan, you go along with that, and we, I talked to Joe about it, as far as the, the contracts you hold with Highlander, you're in great place as far as the amount of money you still have, and substantial, you haven't given substantial completion, you haven't, you know, so there's a lot of things working toward, working in our favor, I guess, but I got, you know, we, we found out about it yesterday afternoon, that they were going to be gone the rest of this week, so we're, you know, we're going to talk to you about it tonight and then talk to them about it tomorrow.
Why are they gone?
They're using the railroad as an excuse, but they're doing other projects.
Hmm. It's just, we've had experience with the railroad in the past, and it hasn't been good experiences, that's why we need to put our foot down. And that's where the Highlander is.
You know what bothers me, Joe? Whenever somebody's needed money, we've had special meetings, we've done whatever we can, and you would, you would expect a likely...
I'd like to say, we can get into it, our contractors meeting tomorrow, but...
Are they going to be there?
Yes.
The contractor?
Not the railroad.
The railroad. Highlander going to be there?
Yeah.
No, what I'm getting at is, I've seen the railroad out there, like, say on a state highway, if they put a new, a new crosser in, and they've been able to marry up the blacktop and everything to the state highway without too much difficulty. So I'm just saying, you know, our, our people, especially over on Shady, have been waiting long. Is that all you had on that?
That's all I have, Five Streets, Joe.
And I, I actually talked with Brad Olin, I'll bring this up too, about two weeks ago, when they were working on East State Street, they used a pay, they had a payloader, and the way that guy drove it, I thought that he should have been, he should be a racecar driver, eighty-five hundred. And I called Brad Olin right off, and even my wife said, "Dan, you're right, he was going too fast," and went, "Shady, you know, come on." And I, I don't know if that was ever, I don't know if anything was ever said, but he remarked to me from Mr. Olin was, "I've taught, told my men to be aggressive and get the job done, but be safe." That was his exact words, so. And that payloader, had something went out in front of it, there was no, did you see it go by your house, Charlie?
They go by all the time, and they...
This, this guy was going backwards.
I didn't see him.
Yeah, down the road backwards, and then came back, because he had broom sweep on it.
No, I didn't see that one.
Oh. There's a few things that I'm not too sure of.
Okay, municipal solutions contract, water amendment, basically, they're in the process of getting everything ready to basically close things out, be ready to do the long-term bonding, and there's going to be increased charges with municipal solutions. And it looks like the water amendment will be an additional twenty-eight thousand. And then the sewer amendment, that's an additional sixty-five hundred. Basically, what we need is a motion for each one of those to move forward, and sign their amended contract.
What's the basis for the amendment? Do you just want to raise a question, or is there a reason for it?
No, it's, I guess, it's the extra work, I mean, when they did the original contract, it was in that, that if they...
So it's work that's already been done, you're saying?
There's going to be so much an hour if they won't...
Right, it's work that's already been done, you're saying?
Well, it's work that's going to be getting done too, because they got to do all the work for the long-term bonding and setting up, work with EFC to get the final payments from them, and then the long-term bond for what we'd be paying on our yearly payout.
Maybe this is unfair question, Joe. You've been, you've been more involved with this than any of us.
It's...
Is this rate fair?
No, it's... It's been a little bad, Pam, because we've had back and forth with EFC and municipal solutions, finances, and the pandemic didn't help, but I think everybody was working from home.
Well, then I'm not going to look for it.
Is there something that we have to do, or not have to do?
Yeah, basically, there's a...
I mean, we're in the middle of this, not going to go forward unless this is approved, okay?
I'm sorry?
This is, it's not going to go forward unless this is approved, is what you're saying?
Pretty much, right, Pam?
Yeah.
We, we have to do it, basically, I mean, it's...
But, do they know, they're at ten, and they're holding us hostage to a figure?
That's what I'm saying.
I think we can hold hostages to a figure.
Well, I don't think they're holding us hostage, it's just, like I said, in the original agreement, they said anything above beyond would be additional.
Seems like we don't allow that, right?
On our, then we signed that agreement back in twenty sixteen.
Joe, I hadn't seen this, but is this, does this have to do with chasing EFC for, to get them to move off on the, on the funding?
No.
This isn't that, okay.
Well, it's, I think when we talked before, we said, "EFC wants to get started so they can close things out in December," it's part of that process. So yes, they will be working with EFC.
That closeout, that closeout process from one part of the original...
I mean, basically, to get the Five Streets project totally closed out, and the long-term bond start.
That closeout process wasn't in the original contract with you guys? The closeout process you're talking about with EFC, that wasn't in the original contract?
Well, that wasn't with EFC, that was with municipal solutions.
Right, I, I, your contract with municipal solutions originally, that didn't include the closeout, loan, loan, the closeout process, excuse me? I was just curious.
No, I'm just looking for something here.
I think what it boils down to, I think what it boils down to is, they, they anticipated a certain amount of contract, and they put more into it, and envisioned more into it. I, I'd be happy to take a look at it, I haven't seen what they sent for.
Well, just example for like the clean water part of it here, it says, "Long-term closing with the Clean Water State Revowal Fund. The following items will be completed under this portion of the contract if appropriate. Coordination between SRF personnel, village officials, local attorneys, bond councils, and any information requested by agencies received in a timely manner. Advise the villages as to when the loan settlement may take place with SRF. This will include planning maturity days at the most opportune time of the village's fiscal year. Review all the costs and exhibit the bond board history, return bond amount," and then it continues on all the stuff that they would be doing. That's, that's on the water portion, and basically, it's the same thing on the sewer side.
And so are they just saying that it's more than they anticipated? It's more time ahead, it's been more than... I know when we were talking with them, they were having trouble getting responses from the funding agencies, and I don't, I didn't hear, I didn't know about this until now, so I don't know if that's what this is or not, but...
No, and as far as those agencies, we actually got a conference call, so I don't, I think you guys are on that Monday.
Yep.
So basically, to move forward, we need a motion for each one of them. Basically, what the motion does is authorize me to sign that additional.
And is that going to get wrapped into your overall, is that going to get wrapped into the overall project financing? Also, I mean, that's, it's not coming out of, out of the, it's coming out of the overall project, it's not coming...
It's not the whole project.
Is this something that can be negotiated, you think, at all, or not?
No, no, we're not negotiating.
I'm just, I'm just looking for, because I'm not familiar with it, what's going on, some kind of recommendation, somebody that has been, you know, involved into it.
I don't think we have a choice if we want to...
You don't think we have a choice, Pam?
No, I mean, this financing, I think Joe, Russell can speak for it, I mean, everything's kind of complicated, and...
Correct.
Conveniently complicated?
Pam's being correct, it is complicated. I have not found these guys to be over-aggressive with what they're looking for, they're just looking to be compensated for what they anticipate they're going to have into this.
Is that a fancier term for being paid for mad work? That's what it sounds like to me. I never sound...
Well, also got to think, remember, this is a pretty big project for...
Yeah, we're two-five, I get it all, Joe.
Right, millions, you know, business.
It's just like, I feel sorry for our residents when we're playing Russian roulette with this kind of stuff, instead of one bullet being in the chamber, there's six.
I mean, that's a little over nineteen million dollar project, but they're dealing with, helping us out with.
As loudly as I've spoken against it, I'll make a motion, then we pass it.
Is that for the water amendment?
The water amendment.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need motion on the...
I'll make a motion for the sewer part.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's another one too, correct?
That's something different. Basically, uh... What this is here is, this is in regards to our sewer plant, a phase two expansion down there. Right now, there's sixty-five, sixty-five million dollars in WQIP money out there, grant money to go after. And they're going to go after a chunk of that money, which basically would pay for the disinfection part of the plant, I believe. I think the disinfection's a little over one point two, one point three million, is that right? Somewhere in that area? And so, their charge for doing all that work is forty-five hundred dollars, but if we get a million dollars, it'll be worth it.
Correct.
And they're pretty sure where we, our project's already gone out and bid and everything, that usually these particular grants, and this through, actually through DDC, isn't it? That's one...
I think the QI, I think that one is, yes.
That they tend to fund the projects that are already moving forward.
They, they want to spend the money, so they want projects that are going to be built.
Yeah, and ours just gone out to bid, bid opening is two names, so... Just need a motion to move forward with them on that one. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Groundwater well development project. Have any... Nothing on that, does it?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay.
I was just going to, back on the wastewater stream plant, I just wanted to sort of, mine...
Oh, you want to back?
Back there. Next week, the twenty-fifth, we were going to have the pre-bid meeting, all of the plants, is that still okay with you?
Yeah, that's, that's good with us.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, Joe already said the project's been out to bid, and we're opening bids, I hear the village offices on, on June eighth, so... That's all I got for that one, Joe.
Do you have anything on the groundwater?
I do, yeah, mainly, uh, the seeker tonight, because of the addition of a new building, due to the change in the, in the project scope, we do need to revise the seeker, the AAF. I have completed a revised, uh, part one, I sent it to you, Pam, this morning. Joe, are we okay to move forward on that tonight? Joe?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
But on your recommendation, Joe, basically, all we're doing is adding another millimeter up there next to Young Pond, and, and changing the direction, or where we're going to run the new water line, and we, just because of those two minor changes, we got to do this whole thing, the seeker all over.
Uh-uh, I'm afraid we do, we're cha, we're changing what we're doing on the ground, so we're going to have to redo it.
I mean, the main reason we're making the change too, was, Joe, in case you might not know, is, uh, basically, it was a recommendation from the Department of Health that we pulled this from, that's why we made the change, just so you know.
The agencies we're dealing with, we're, we're going to have to redo the seeker.
Especially with, with the amount of money that we're asking for, they, they, all of the lawyer, you know, EFC, that's what, the EFC lawyer was the one that stumbled this on, the last one, and they just, just want to make sure all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, even though it's something, the water line was there, now it's here, we just need to...
We're going to do the seeker again and just redate the date on it, is what it amounts to.
Well, the problem with...
Couple words and, and the, yeah.
It's, the problem is, I, I think, Joe, when we do the seeker, though, we have to redo the bond and the resolution and all that, don't we?
Yes, we do, but if we're, if we're changing what we're doing on the ground, we're going to have to do that.
So I mean, there's costs involved, Dan, that's why it bothers me.
It shouldn't bother you there, I didn't realize the bond part, because that's got to be redated too.
I don't...
That'll be another twenty-eight thousand dollars.
And I think, you know, I think, Joe, overall, I know there's an expense to that, but I think in the end, the, the solution we're going to end up with, I think, is a, is a more cost-effective project, you know, so I think there, there is an offset to that extra cost, and, and it's, you know, we won't see it until we put it out to bid and, and build the project, so in the end, that long-term financing would be for a lower amount, you know?
So do we need to run through that seeker, or not?
I don't think you need to run through it line by line. Joe, do you need, do we need to run through it line by line?
For just...
Well, you, you, the board needs, the board needs to accept part one of the EAF and declare lead agency status, and then we need to get it circulated to the other involved agencies, even, correcting. So with respect to the EAF part one, the board, F what you presented.
Yeah, I think you need to make a motion to accept what we presented, I think that's what you're trying to say.
So can we have a motion for the CCor, and consider us lead agency, right?
Yeah, I think you need one motion to accept part one, right, and another motion to declare lead agency, is that right, Pam?
You can do it, you can do them all, you can do them both in one motion, that's not a problem.
If you have a motion out there?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think the other thing to mention too, is that in the end, this, building the project this way is going to make your operation much simpler over there, you know?
For maintenance-wise, it's going to be quite a bit simpler.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a long-term cost, I mean, and we don't have a, I don't have a dollar amount for it, but there's a long-term savings there, I think it'll make it easier in the long run.
I mean, in case the rest of the board didn't know, I mean, the main reason we're changing it is because it was a recommendation required by the health, and we want to keep those guys happy.
And that's, there's a cost there too.
So you guys have anything else on that?
No, that's, that was mainly my one question.
I would just add that you were talking about the funding and the WQIP grant, the CFA, there's a lot of this revolving fund stuff, and you probably have seen it in your emails and stuff, but there's a lot of programs out there right now, where they're looking for grant applications, and this is the season that we do that. So if there's anything that caught your eye in that, in that list of all the grants, grant funding availability, and we can, we can help you with that, if you have any questions.
Yeah, Joe, and the whole board, there was another thing I wanted to hit on with the, the bids for the wastewater project, is that I, I heard rumblings from people that these type of projects have been coming in pretty high over budget lately, upwards of fifty percent, I even heard on some of them.
Well, that's what I was afraid of, because you have, there's a lot of projects out there, so people aren't hungry, and the other thing is, materials take on a big challenge.
I, I guess I just wanted to warn all you guys now that, that is a possibility right now.
I thought of that way before it went off the bed.
Materials and labor, I mean, it's hard to even do a cost estimate anymore with the way your material costs and...
I mean, back in, when we started this Five Streets project, construction companies were hungry, so it wasn't, they're not now.
And just something as simple as a piece of OSB, I mean, they used to be nine or ten dollars, and now it's seventy-five, so you can't, to try to pick a number in the sky that is, is where this project will end up, it's, it's impossible anymore, but, but you just hope you hit it in the right, the right season, and get, get it out to bid, and find the right contractor that's hungry. And it has people to do the work, that's, that's the second problem, right? Get, get good bids first, and then have quality people to do the work, is another problem.
And the tight timeframe that we have is another issue, that just raises the cost.
Okay, street lighting, leading LED conversion program, don't have an awful lot on that, except maybe you noticed the banners are back up on the, veterans' banners are back on the telephone poles, and supposedly, they're supposed to have another seventeen banners coming in, and so basically, we had to, every time we do this, we have to get permission from National Grid, so we sent all the poll numbers, we sent the new poll numbers and everything in, and when Pam sent everything to Jennifer at National Grid, Jennifer did tell her that some of the LED projects are starting to come back from the Public Service Commission, so she expects that we should hear something on ours any day, but that's the latest Pam and I have on. She just happened to make that comment when we were talking to her, doing the banners. So hopefully, we'll get something out this summer. Manufactured homes, zoning, that's...
I don't know if Joe's had a chance to review that or not.
I haven't yet, but I will do, I will do so before the next meeting.
And I also sent that smoke shop thing to you too, Joe, did you look at that?
No, I didn't get a chance to look at either one of them, the last month has been a little bit rough in and out of the hospital, so I will definitely be able to do so between now and next meeting.
That was the next item on the list, zoning changes, smoke shops, tobacco stores, but...
Everybody else looked at that, correct?
Yeah.
No, it's just a draft thing.
I printed it out, very good.
We could add to it and do whatever with, you know, we can incorporate some of the marijuana stuff in it.
Has, has anybody had any comment back from the general public on, on this subject?
I'll tell you one thing, that smoke shop up on the corner, I mean, I said smoke shop, I'm thinking of sell cigarettes. My neighbor told me last week, he went in there to buy a pack of cigarettes, and the guy told me they don't even sell cigarettes in there, so I don't know what they sell on.
What corner are you talking about? Which one?
The way he told me, it was on up there by the pizza place.
Oh, yeah, they don't, they sell all sorts of stuff, they don't sell cigarettes.
Then he went in to get cigarettes, because he's an avid smoker.
They're going to be selling something else too, if we don't go to the shop.
Well, that's what, when we're on zoning changes, smoke shops, I'd like to jump down to K, marijuana regulation and the Taxation Act. I mean, I don't think you saw the report in the paper, and you saw, I saw it on the news last night, and in the paper also about the gentleman from Colorado, and, uh... I guess my thought is, we're in Lewis County, anybody that wants marijuana, is going to grow twelve plants in their backyard, they're not going to be spending big dollars on it. I mean, I'm still leaning towards that we should. Wherever I threw it here, go to the opt-out law that I did a couple meetings back.
Well, if you opt out, you cannot back in, but if you opt in, you can't opt out.
Right.
You can, you can opt out, but then if you want to change that later, you can't.
There's a guy that stayed at our bed breakfast two weeks ago from Boulder, Colorado, and he, it just happened, you know, I mean, he was on the ZPA board out there, some little town in Boulder, Colorado, and he said the exact same thing to this guy, he said, "It is so expensive that nobody buys it, just, you know, there's the people that are just passing through, it's almost like a tourist thing," you know what I'm saying, "more than anything," and he said, "The black market now is thriving out there because they can," you know?
I mean, I'm not saying they're not going to get it, but I just, my thought is, let's not make it easy for them to get it.
Right, they'll get it, I mean, one way or the other.
Randy's going to have all kinds of problems, and please come on.
What, what will happen, okay, so now the state has the law, what happens with the people that don't have the correct licenses to sell, what's the penalty mandate?
I don't know what that, I don't know what that would be yet either.
It's only two hundred and fifty dollars to have more than what you possess, though, right? Minimum for that, I don't know what the pound is for selling it, you know, if you don't have license, I don't know.
I would imagine it's going to go off the existing laws that were already out there.
I mean, the state would pass law only to have the black market put the screws to without nailing one they could, I would think.
This guy said that, you know, how long did Bedley go out there, eight years or something, probably? He said that in their town, they just got their first dispensary, because they just allowed it, so they kind of opted back in, but he said that the best thing a municipality can do, he said, is just have no public consumption, just like your open container law. He said, you know, otherwise, people can smoke it anywhere, but if you mirror your, excuse me, your open container law, they can't smoke it going down the street, you know what I mean, they can't smoke it in public. Yeah, they're going, but at least you got an act. Yeah, they're going, but at least you got an avenue to, you know, arrest them or enforce them. That's what he said.
Because if you had, like, zones, that'd be totally more difficult to enforce, whereas, if you're, you're right, you're going to get away with it.
You want to mirror your open container laws, is what he said.
Yeah, you're not going to, if, if the law is the law, you're going to catch, you're taking your chance if you're going to do it.
Right.
Whereas if we had zones, that'd be harder to enforce, I think.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you just got to do it just like you do the open container law. When we do it, have, pass a law, a local law, basically, or that mirrors the open container law for consumption, anyway. Still can opt out of the sales of it. But it'll, he, he said the same thing, they're a small town, and eventually, it kind of got there, you know what I mean? So then, it sounds like they opted back in because, like Dan said, to get a little revenue out, but it took like eight years.
I guess my question now becomes, is there a deadline as to when we have to make a commitment, one way or another?
Yeah, the end of this year.
Yep.
Yeah, the end of this year.
We got time.
Yeah, we got time. Well, it would take a couple of months, correct? I mean, you'd have to, what, you got a longer period?
It's going to, it's going to take a couple of months, going to move forward to do some sort of banning. We need to be thinking about that within the next couple of months, yes.
I would think you would have to do something by August at the latest, wouldn't you, Joe? I would think you'd be.
Well, yeah, we've got until December 31st, for sure, but I would want to get something done, you know, by early fall, for sure.
And it is subject to remiss referendum, too, right?
Yep, correct.
Does it, does it have a deadline, but it also December 31st?
I don't think.
December 31st is when we have, that's when we have to adopt local laws.
Adopt the local law.
To restrict use of it, yes.
So what, how is, there's a, there's a statute of limitations on the public referendum rule. What's that, 30 days, Joe? After the fact?
That's 30 days, yes, yes.
I, I will tell.
What I plan, what I plan on doing, I had planned on doing it before now, but I plan on contacting, you know, the village, state representatives, and the town state representatives, and see what I can get from them as far as what they've put together for laws going both ways, so we can have something to look at.
I've had people in the community approach me or tell me both sides of the coin, but I think the comments that I'm getting from the people that are against it are more, have more teeth as to why they're against it than the people that are for it.
I think that no public consumption is.
Well, I, I still think we need to opt out first because.
Definitely a good thing.
It's just like this guy, this sheriff from Colorado, and the guy that told me, he said, this law allows anybody to grow it at their house. There's no way of getting around that, you can't stop that. That's what's going to, you know, that's what's going to grow is the, is the black market part of it.
Which they can do whether we opt in or opt out anyways.
Correct, we're just opting out of sale in the village.
Dispensaries is really what the issue is.
Hopefully, I sent this out a couple of months ago, an opt-out law that I put together. And basically, I got my information from the Town Hill Commission when I did this letter. And that's not only opting out of sales, but that's opting off of, like, onsite areas where people can gather to consume.
Right.
Can't have a little view.
And Tim's right, if we don't opt out, we're going to be restricted from opting out later. So I think he's right, we need to think about what we want to do, and we need, we need to move on it earlier than, because we don't want to be caught up at the very end of the time period and have to redo something.
Which way does anybody lean?
I'm leaning to opt out, but.
Based on what I've just heard about, once you're in, it's pretty hard to get out. I'd like, I, I would take the wait-and-see attitude by opting out.
So it's almost, would you have?
It's the other way around, Dan.
You'd opt out, eh?
You'd opt out now.
You think any of us?
And opt in later.
That's what I mean, but if we opt in, we're goofed.
We just, we just want to have.
And that's what scares me. We can't, we can't get, it doesn't make sense, you can get in or get out, stay out, but get in, but once you get in, you can't get out.
Right.
But that's the way it is.
Yeah.
Does it sound like any of us are going to take their money next month or two?
I'm definitely against it based on that.
No, but I think what Joe's saying, and I'm kind of saying, too, there's, there's other parts of that, like the public consumption and all that, if we're going to do it, we got to do the whole package.
Right, and we want to.
Would that, would that be part of the opt-out law, like?
No.
I'm sorry, Joe?
No, I'm saying, if we did an opt-out law, does, like, he's talking open container, basically.
Yeah, because public consumption.
Would that be part of that law, that's a separate, that would be a separate section, wouldn't it?
It could be, yeah. We need to, we need to take a good, I want to get some information from the village reps at the state level and the town reps, so we know exactly what we're looking at, and we're all on the same page when we do something. I'd like to have something to you guys, you know, between now and next board meeting, so that it's a June board meeting, you can at least look at it. We can either make some changes, schedule a public hearing for the following meeting, however you want to go, but between now and the June board meeting, I'd like to have something in your hands.
Opting out or opting in requires a public hearing?
Yes. Well, I will let, see what Joe can come up with for our next meeting, we'll make a decision at the next meeting. That sounds all right with everybody? Or you want to get back to your smoke shop?
Well, I said that, but Joe hasn't had a chance to look at it. And what we're trying to do is stop, like, what happened downtown, we had the regulation on, and if one of them leaves, and then they can't come back, you know, so. That'll be part of the zoning law, that'll be, just like the manufacturing homes.
Okay, downtown parking sites.
I'll have that, I'll have that reviewed and have a report to you between now and then.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Downtown parking sites, I think Paul's been working on that, so.
Yep, when the county gets it to us, we'll get them up.
So they're already approved where they're going and all that?
Yes, I've been in contact with the State of New York, and he's good with.
The county's been making for us?
About a couple.
Census of the Year.
Census of the Year. The seven nominations have been turned over to the government class at Lawville Academy and Central School, and then the next, they've had them for about, right before I left Florida, so they've had them for about 10, 12 days. I was going to try and get to Mr. Phail today, but I just didn't, so I will, because my, my goal is to award it in late June. If the board approves, I'd like to award it to the winning recipient in late June, and also acknowledge the person that nominated, the winning recipient. There's, there's some really good, there's some really good names, and there's a few that I was surprised didn't get submitted, but maybe after this year, you'll see, it'll catch up. I was happy that we had seven.
Tim, so you don't want to do it at the Lewis County Fair?
I don't, well, now that the, the Oak Ridge, it sounds like it's going to be a free-for-all, I mean, the fair's going to be able to have a fair. Maybe we would, I don't know. Would, would the board rather see it awarded, maybe the night of the Oak Ridge Boys, if the fair board would go along with, maybe it's not fair to say it with just one board member here? Or would we rather have it be a village?
Is anybody coming up on the fair here, tomorrow night or something?
Yep.
They're going to decide having to go forward or not?
Yes.
Paul, would you do it? If the board doesn't have a problem, could he ask the, the fair board if they would have a problem with the award being given the night of the Oak Ridge Boys?
Could be the Oak Ridge Boys, it could be opening night. There's a lot of people in the grandstand for the parade.
I'm going to be the marshal, the grand marshal on the, on the parade. Just like you, the grand marshal of the parade, just like you and Farnie, that, you're on the tractors. Be Farnie.
So, yeah, we, I guess I'd be open to that, the rest of the board would be. Because I'd like to see, I think it'd be cool for the more people that, and we'll somehow make sure that person's there without them knowing.
Could probably be more people, huh?
I can ask the fair lord tomorrow night.
I don't know, I'm working on getting Aerosmiths right now, so you just never know.
Music in the park?
Yeah. Besides Aerosmith. Okay, as of right now, we have June the 29th, the Nelson Brothers. July the 6th, Bill Burkhart and Casby Sauer. July the 13th, we have Tony Rebecc's band, I think it's called Due North. And on August 24th, Doc UConn, which is the biter band, which used to be known as, oh, what was their name?
Moonjivers.
And we're working on a few others, because I still don't have quite the mix I would like. I think Bill Burkhart will bring it down a notch with some softer music. We're still trying to find a polka band. I don't know if Fred and the Ed's play, they're more upbeat band, too, but they're phenomenal, out of Watertown, we would like to get them. Bill Burkhart thought maybe he could find Pat Britton and Mike Britton brothers, maybe some of his known as football coaches. I, I know Mike real well, I don't, I wouldn't know Pat if I bumped into him. But, so we're working on it, but we do have four bands right now, like Joe.
How many openings do you have?
I would say we could have four more, because as of right now, we've committed $1,850, and then Mr. Altmyer, who's here tonight, will be live streaming it, and I guess he's about $150, I think, for the streaming of it, so he's going to stream it all, so the people that attend and attend will be able to see it live stream. I don't know that there'll be many restrictions at this point in the park because of the way things are opening up. I've talked with Randy, and we would like to, and I've talked with Pam about budgeting for, to have two police officers there. And in fairness to Randy, not having it come out of his budget, and in fairness to the $5,000, I'd like to see that stay for the bands, and I would like to hope that the village board would say, "Yeah", for what we're doing for the community, we can come up with paying the police officers for, for the coverage, to just, because I've worked with Ashley Wade also, and we've worked very well. And since I've talked to her the last time, a lot more has opened up, so. She told me that, I said, "Should we take temperatures?", she says, "No, taking temperatures in the summer like that is fruitless." If I remember, what she said was, "You're not going to get good reading anyways when it's outdoors." So she's been great to work with, and I've talked with her a few times, and as a matter of fact, Joe works for Ashley, he's a pocket boss. Thanks for that. Oh, I'm sorry. So that's, that's what I can tell you on the music in the park. I think it's going to be good. I hope that it comes off without too many issues. Something like that will have some issues, and then we can expound on it next year if we can grant, decide to do it again.
Okay, Town Village Parking lot, have any to say on that? Paul, or, everybody can see, there's a nice new blacktop out there.
It'll be.
Yeah, they got traffic.
It's something, we are going to start that.
Are you going to try that?
Yeah. There's this, a shortage of paint right now, so I'm more concerned with doing the village than the park.
Plus, we want some spaces so we can have trucks in, not like last time. Okay, Village Court, do you have a report from the committee on that?
Oh, yes. We met with Jen Scordo, Ricky Stanton, and I can't say it, the clerk's name.
I can't say his name.
Her last name is Murphy.
Erin.
Erin Murphy, thank you. Charlie, I guess if I'm going to speak, if you want to speak right up. It's Charlie, and my recommendation, that at this point in time, based on the workload and the revenue has picked up, because now they're catching up with the COVID cases, and I think the young lady we've got working is, is doing a good job, that for the time being, we continue on with the hours that, that she's receiving. She seems to be doing her job, and Charlie and I are, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Charlie, are recommending to the board that at this point in time, we continue with the 37, whatever hours it is, Pam, that she's navigating.
35.
35. So, and I feel that, we'll feel any questions you might have.
You think it should be reviewed again in the future?
Well, I, I think, I think there's a lot of questions that still can be asked, that right now, you know, we're in, we're in a look-see process. I took the liberty to call a friend of Blaskai, who has been a judge for 25 years in the town of Richland, but lives in the village of Blaskai, his name is Jim Ridgway. And Jim pretty much told me that right now, the judges, clerks are inundated with backup work, catching up with COVID, and it appears that that's exactly what's going on here.
That's what she's doing now, was to quickly catch up?
Yes, yes, and it reflects in the revenue. So I think at this point in time, it would be, it would be, it would be wrong to slow up the process, but I, I don't think that this is an issue that we just say goes away right now. There's a lot of questions that still can be asked as we move down, down the road, I believe.
Why don't we do something like this? Let's, let it continue for three more months as it is, and then we'll review it again in three months.
That sounds good.
And if they're right, because if they're catching up on COVID, you would think we'd have kind of an idea of what they're, if they're caught up or not.
I'll make that as a motion then.
I'll second that.
Paul, favor?
Aye.
And while we're on Village Court, I got a question for everybody. As you know, the villages can dissolve their village court into the town. And if we were to dissolve our court, we need to do it this year, because our judge is up for reelection in March. And the only time you can dissolve a village court is when the judge leaves, or the judge is up for reelection. Basically, the village can turn it over to the town, town doesn't really have any say in the matter of them. And talking with Joe, basically, he suggests that if we want to do something like that, we need to do it now, establish our law, there has to be a public hearing on that also, but then the judge also knows that when her term is up, March 31st, that's it, so she's not out campaigning and doing all that. Is that right, Joe?
Well, sure, if you're going to go that direction, the sooner the better.
Does, I have a question on that, Joe.
Yeah?
The, the town, the town does not have to agree to this? In other words, the town, okay.
Well, the village, the village can abolish the justice, the village justice, just as Joe indicated, as long as we do it effective when the current judge's term expires.
Or if a judge were to resign? And you could merge that.
Sure, you did it, yeah, you could do it that way, sure.
Thank you.
Basically, the court's been losing us money for the last three years.
I was just going to say, that's something you'd have to look at the finances to see if there is.
No, we've, we've lost money for three years straight. Not that I'm saying we should be out there writing tickets, it's why the court, but still.
We, what are the issues we want to be careful bringing up is, well, I understand that, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm against merging the courts at all. We want to be careful bringing that up because the courts.
We wouldn't be merging the courts.
We would dissolve it, excuse me.
We'd be dissolving, it would all be on the town side.
By, by the way, I understand that, whether we like it or not, finances or revenue isn't supposed to be a basis for dissolving a court. So that, that was quoted, that was quoted to me by somebody outside this community. Have I seen it in writing? No, but I trust that there's probably some truth to it. And there will be some costs if you were to dissolve the court and, and archiving stuff, which is going to be a one-time deal, and that, that probably is not a huge issue. Another thing that I will tell you, seeing how we're talking about this, is the clerk right now that we have does both.
Right.
So it might eliminate some confusion. So it might eliminate some confusion. But for the time being, I agree with the motion, Joe, for three months I do, I think that's good. It gives us time to, to dig deeper into it. Joe, do you have any, do you, do you have any, uh, other communities have done this? What has been the, the reaction or feedback? Have you gotten any as to positive, negative?
Well, usually, I mean, it's, it's an overall, usually it's an overall positive move depending on the size of the village court. You know, what kind of, uh, activity you have, but you know, it, it just moves to the town court. And, uh, you know, the town justices are gonna be, uh, busier is what it boils down to. Yeah, I've, I've done it, I've done it at a few different municipalities. Um, and you gotta make sure you do it right, you gotta do it when the current judge's term is gonna expire.
Danny's right that we don't have to get their permission for this, but any idea what their reaction might be? I mean, we work well with them.
You mean the town?
The town. We're not, are we upsetting the apple cart, saying, or we're splitting a pavement with them, we're splitting some rec with them? I, I'm not against it either, I'm just, anybody talk to the town?
We've talked with them before. Back when Don, back when Don was here, I know she talked with Randy on it. So I mean, they're aware of that, we've been thinking about it.
Right.
It's not like. But that's what I mean, if we're thinking of doing something like this, we need to let the parties know. Jen needs to know, the town needs to know.
Right.
And Joe needs to put the local law together.
Uh, Randy Schell obviously has announced that he's not running again. So would it be wise at this point, if this is the, uh, that we're looking at this, that we talked with, uh, Bob Mullins? I'm, I'm assuming Bob's gonna be the next superintendent, I don't see anybody else running. Should, should that discussion start taking place?
What's the board's interest in dissolving it or not? Or you wanna table it till next board meeting, make the decision in June?
Do we wanna try and get some pros and cons and do the old high school T.I. I don't know. Remember how you build the team, you listen to pros, you listen to cons?
Yeah, let's do that, let's table it till next. I'd like to talk to a few people.
We can talk to a few people.
I think we should.
Back with some ideas.
Say something to the town.
But I just, like Joe says, we need to act before it's too late because like I say, you have to have your hearings and everything.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Put it this way, if you're gonna do it, you should probably do it sometime during 2021. Her term expires on March 31st, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so you know, you, you could, you got a couple of months to do some homework, but while we're thinking of whether to do it or not.
New business, craft sure charges, I don't believe there was any this month. I haven't, was it Pam?
No.
I was gonna say, I didn't have a paper on it, I think there was any. Pam's got some. But it's amendments. Need a motion to authorize Pam to make those amendments?
Do we need to do them separately, we can, we do a, uh?
You can do one.
Make a motion that, uh, we do the budget amendments as recommended in the, in the water fund, the sewer fund, and the general fund. Of the amounts, uh, that are submitted at forty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two for the general, six thousand for the water fund, and five thousand for sewer fund.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, basically this is just information, uh, saying what some of the stimulus money that we're supposed to be getting here shortly can be used for. I know we're hoping, uh, we can come up with a few other things to use it for also. Basically, our money goes to the state and then the state's got thirty days, so it's like, instead of sixty, it's more like ninety days for villages to get their money.
What's our portion?
We're not sure yet, we're thinking possibly around three hundred, a little over. But you only get half of that this year, only half of it next year. We got some contracts for 2021 and 22. First one's allowable fire contract for sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. What I'm hoping for tonight, I guess, is authorization to sign that contract when it comes through.
I'll make the motion, we sign the contract.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
One, one footnote on that. We agreed, uh, that, uh, I believe in July, we would, we would pay that.
Yeah, we moved it up.
Yeah, thank you.
As allowable free library, uh, five thousand dollars to them.
I'll make that motion as well.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one's, uh, income for us. Allowable central school and new sanding and sweeping contract. Charge them that amount?
My, I've raised this question before, I don't have a problem with the figure. My concern is, are we doing anything, Attorney Russell, that, uh, should be allowed for by private corporations?
They're public, they're all damn schoolers.
I don't understand what you're getting at.
What I'm getting at is, the school is an entity like we are, should, should that be bid out? Should they be, should they be required to bid that out? Could we get in trouble for just going, doing this? I know we've asked the question, I've asked the question before.
No, you, you don't have to bid out between municipalities, no.
You're just thinking.
This, this has been ongoing for years, it's nothing new.
I know, a question came up once before and I can't remember, Joe, what the answer was.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to bid out between municipalities.
I'll make the motion that, uh, we may, we present that to them.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, village band concerts, uh, to, uh, give the band four thousand dollars to put on the concerts this summer, hopefully we'll have a few. Motion to sign that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Summer rec, basically, uh, two years ago, it was forty thousand dollars for a six-week program. Looks like this year for a six-week program, it's gonna be fifty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is roughly eleven hundred dollars more than it was, eleven thousand dollars, excuse me, more than it was two years ago. Lot of things have happened. Number one, I'm, 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 but, uh, minimum wage gone up last year, minimum wage has gone up again this year. So that's reflected in there. There's certain things they have to do with the rec staff as far as COVID-19 goes yet, disinfecting, all the different things there. So that also adds an increase to the price. I talked to Randy Schell and he said the town is willing to, or he's gonna take to his town board, and he's pretty sure there won't be a problem. That eleven thousand dollars we'd split, we'd pay an additional fifty, five hundred, and the town would pay an additional fifty this year to be able to put the six-week program on for residents. And it's been well received in the past when we've had it. I mean, the year we've scaled it back to four weeks, we had a, a lot of requests to bring back to six weeks, so we did two years ago. And that's why we went with six weeks again this year.
I think the, the pool's a big issue as well. I know in the past, I don't know how many years ago, five, 10 years ago, some years the pool hasn't been available, had to use wet stone, things like that. So I, I talked to Dan today and he thinks that to go for the pool as well for the school, so. I'm on double place board, I've seen their, their end-of-year reports for their finance. I don't have, uh, past years in front of me, but this looks like it's pretty much all staff. I mean, I don't see where five hundred dollars in equipment, so, uh, I don't know where we could cut it down.
The last few years when they've done it, they've put a, a real good program on and we've ended up with positive feedbacks.
I'll make the motion, please, I'll just.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any, no contingencies, we, we'll just talk to the town as far as, I mean, they're gonna go with that, but.
The way Randy talked to me, he's pretty sure it's gonna fly, so. Plus the other thing is, we're both. Insufferable.
School is asking hard as masks is.
If you look at this, uh, no.
What about the undercourt?
There's a very good chance, then you go back and look at this, uh, kind of the state recovery fund on that. Some of that money could possibly be used to offset this fifty-five hundred when we get it. Because basically you're, uh, you kinda gotta read between the lines, but I'm pretty sure we can.
We're gonna offset whatever we wanna do with that money, I get it.
I think we can use some of that stimulus money towards that if we need to.
I had, the program was always, but my kids were in it, now my grandchildren are in it, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
So does anybody else have any new business or, before we move on? Correspondence, American Legion, uh, contract for use of village spectrum. Everybody have a copy of the dates and things they want on?
There's a problem with one of the dates. I have a band booked for August 24th.
This is for conversation, Brian Trainer, is that who you're using?
Yeah, but August 24th is booked, so I'm guessing that, uh.
He's saying additional dates may occur, so I wonder if he's thinking about your date there, the 24th?
I don't know. If he would've, if he would've communicated with me upfront, it was about a lot.
It would've been a lot.
I learned about this secondhand when I went to book a band. And I'm sure he's going to use a, he's gonna say he just heard about that morning. But I can't believe that between nine and 10 o'clock, the band that he, that, uh, was booked, that they were talking to also. Because this band informed me they'd already been booked for a date on June the 1st. So that being said, uh, I guess, I guess, I don't have any problem with this. I, I'm a little disappointed that Mr. Hinkleman didn't communicate with me. I had a time and people can read between the lines and decide if he was right or I was right. But moving forward, I think next year, I'm gonna recommend that we do this. We let him have his Tuesday nights and we'll do ours on Thursday because he was all for us doing this. And we do, we do, so. But I told him I would support this and I will, but I'm telling you just how I feel too, so.
This is Tuesday nights too that he's got?
Yeah.
It's the nights of his, when you have the car show.
See, they had it last night. I guess that's what I'm, that, that whole paragraph, I'm a little confused, uh, because it says, we, we, we wish to provide live entertainment in support of the weekly car shows and complement the village summer concert series. Those are talking about you, so they're gonna have their own entertainment though, nights too?
The other thing is, he says that they, they understand all the COVID rules. I guess I'd be interested to know if he's talking to public health. Of course, right now, the way the COVID rules are relaxing, it may, that, it may become a moot issue. But I, I've talked with Ash Devant, or Ash Devant, Ashley, uh, weighed three times on this. Plus I've got a thirty-nine-page report that you wanna, you wanna set for yourself for that thing.
Maybe we should request just that, that he does contact public health.
I don't know, he, he said he was gonna be here tonight, but I don't know why he's not. Cause I told him, I, I think he should be here to answer the questions we might have. Or send a representative, and we have neither, either or.
Then we have the issue with, you know, are we going to have police coverage there?
An issue with what?
Are we gonna have some police officers there for these dates too?
That's my other concern, he screws us up. And we kiss our serious goodbye.
Because, you know, it says no alcohol in the park, oh, they sell alcohol right there, you know what I'm saying? What's stopping somebody from just wandering over and standing in the park?
Well, and I get the impression he wasn't even gonna ask, what if we had this, this park reserved for those nights, you know? But.
But you could get that with any group, that's all. I mean, he's turned in, we do have a copy of the insurance and everything.
Well, we listed as additional.
I mean, I guess my thought is, he, he says he's gonna go by the, all the COVID rules, I mean.
Maybe we should get a question to answer.
I guess I don't think that's up to us to.
Well, I can turn more to the police coverage, if we're gonna have it for ours, should we have it there too? Or have it available if needed, I guess.
But we, we do have police on duty, everything, so. I mean, if there's a problem, they can show up, I would say, right, Randy?
I wouldn't do anything extra for it, I don't see the. Patrol on anyhow.
We're gonna have a patrol on anyhow.
Okay. We have, when we end the band concerts, a lot of nights we have light people that are on that police patrol and that.
You're just asking that.
The, the Legion law will do a lot for the community, don't.
I think.
But this thing could've been, could've been handled better. And I don't feel I'm the guilty party.
For the police coverage, you're, you're just asking that they, that they're on that event, whereas what Randy's saying, I believe, is you're, you've got them on duty if something, they're not gonna, they're gonna be there within minutes.
Right, there's always, there's always one person on anyhow.
Right, right.
I think, I think we should also tell them that, uh, these dates are, we're gonna prove these dates as far as, I, I don't believe we make the motion. But there's a caveat here, that if any violations could result in cancellation of the, of the dates. Because then that part, we're, we're responsible if something goes wrong. I know it's veterans' park, but the village, the village has insurance on it.
Well, he's, we've all, he's given us a copy of their insurance already, we have it on file.
Which is, which puts them first line of the file.
I mean, I guess my thought.
Then we become second line, yeah, I, I, that's true, Joe.
They've been having their car shows over there for at least two years, maybe three. To my knowledge, there's been no problems.
Well, she said that, or.
So I guess my thought is, let's have a const, let's have a band and see what happens, see how the night goes. I mean, you're, we may be looking for trouble and it's not out there.
I will, and I promised him that I would support it, so I'll make the motion that we grant him the, the dates. With the understanding that August 24th, we do have a, we do have a band, uh, affected this night.
But you're talking with Brian Trainer too on your band, so maybe we could discuss that, 24th with Brian on that.
The, the issue was, if Brian Trainer was working with our band and Mr. Hinkleman was using a gentleman by the name of Josh Griffith. And when I asked Mr. Hinkleman to have Griffith contact Trainer, he said he would, and then he, I said he hasn't talked to him. He said, well, I don't know why, I gave him the phone number, so there's part of the problem too right there.
So on the specific dates, we wanna approve June first, eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second. That's what we're going with?
And I guess August thirty-first.
Okay. It says additional may occur. June first, thanks for that one.
So everybody's okay with the reason, huh?
I'm against the motion.
I'll say it. Paul in favor? Drainage issue, David Sarah Leeson, did everybody have a copy of that?
I went over and talked with him by request of them. I don't know what date it actually was. Looking back in May, I sent this on, he sent this May eleventh. It was probably the end of April, first part of May. There was some erosion there, but the way that property, the terrain of that property, basically, it goes right downhill in the back. His concern was that if they were ever to add on to their garage, if it would be a problem getting a permit for the addition because of the drainage. And I basically told him, no, that was my opinion, that they would have to bring in Phil and regrade it there anyway, because it raffled off in the back, you know what I mean? So I told him, no. So I asked him what the issue was with the drain pipe and all that, and he told me that he was hoping to get it finished, and at the time, it just wasn't seeded and whatever. So I told him to send me an email, what he wants me to present to the board. So this is the email. Paul's, Paul's been involved.
I'll give you a little synopsis of it. He contacted me last year. There was a six-inch cover pipe, which is extremely small, going across the road. It rotted out over the years. We were gonna pave that road with our CHIPS money, so I wanted to replace it before we paved the road. And so we didn't change anything that hasn't been there for years. My crew did go out, they put, put some topsoil in there, but they never seeded or mulched that last year, so I apologized to them for that, and we went out. First thing when we started topsoil and seeding and mulching, we went right up there and did it, I mean, do a little extra form at the end with some stone, maybe to reduce the flow. But it's, it's something that's been there for years and years, and it's really not, and like I told him, it's really not a village issue. Because most of the problem is in the backyard.
Yeah, we had more, we had more runoff this year. You know, we had a lot more snow, so that was part of it. I, by looking at it, you know, the ground was frozen, it kind of peeled the top layer off, the grass and the seed off. And we talked about different types of seed and all that when I was there, and then I had him send an email to me, which he did. So that's the history of it. I personally don't think he's gonna pursue it any farther as long as the part around there is, is fixed up. And I think it would change year to year, don't you, Paul?
Yes.
Depending on the runoff.
Yep.
Paul, I, I have been meeting this piece of correspondence. I don't know that number five had anything to do with the issues they had at hand, but I, I would, I highly doubt that your department or you would wait till the day of a project. I hope, I hope I'm stating this right, to tell someone the driveway was gonna be blocked off. To me, to me, that didn't need to be in here, but seeing how it is, I would like you to address what, what your feeling is on, on number five.
Um, the driveway was not left off. It would have been, might have been disrupted by trucks and stuff, but he had full access. The pipe was actually south of his driveway.
Yeah, headed more towards, yep, twelve.
Maybe, maybe we should respond back and explain that issue with the others, because I just don't, I don't think that's fair.
I know he had talked to me when he first, when he first came to me, talked to me about this, he, he was really concerned with the five-street projects and not getting an update each week on what they, what they were gonna do the next week. And I told him, we have, we have a general schedule. Things change day by day, so. He was, he was talking about it should be on our website every day or every week, and an update and stuff, and it's, it's just not realistic to do it, so.
Are you going to put, we talked a little bit about that. Thinking of putting some, like, four to six-inch.
Yeah, yeah, just to maybe reduce the flow that comes out of that pipe, but like Tim said, it all depends on, on the spring.
Yeah, I mean.
What type of runoff we have.
There was nothing there.
You go up there now, and it's completely dry.
Yeah, there was nothing. It's all, the road kind of goes down like this, to that cover it out of the outside, and then it runs underneath the road, and.
And there's no storm drain on that side of the road.
The only thing that's ever gonna come out of there is a real, real hard rain or spring runoff.
And there's no way to connect because of the elevation of his land and our existing storm, storm system, which is on the other side of the road. It dead-ends right there. There's no way to have, put a catch basin in there to catch any water or anything. We can't get the water to run out till yet.
We're working on it.
That's a problem throughout the village, believe me. We're working on getting some of them corrected.
So I guess we'll just have to follow up on whatever comes up through here.
Yep.
A solid funding application.
That was our funding for Veterans Park. We had talked about a walkway around Veterans Park and whatnot, so we did not get the funding this year. But the grant application is already open for next year, so we'll be submitting that again. Hopefully, next year, we can get it.
Monument Park looks nice, by the way.
Thank you. Thanks to the BPW crew, and good.
And speaking of parks, the base, everything is done up there at the. Front of the Presbyterian Church. We just gotta get the fountain back up and run it back.
Is it back from westward yet?
Oh, we got it. It's stored.
Crazy dog.
We just gotta, the concrete's gotta cure enough so we can get equipment in there, right, Paul?
Yes. So I'll elaborate on that, I was gonna keep that up in my little section.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So Goods has been up there. They've made a wall around where the basin of the fountain is gonna sit. The fountain has been sandblasted and repainted. We're gonna get that back up as soon as we can. All brand-new concrete around where the basin's gonna be. We have taken down the Christmas tree. Company will be in next week to grind the stump out. We're, I'm in contact with All Seasons in getting a new tree there that won't be as, won't be as tall, won't take away from Memorial Park. I don't know, if you drive up State Street now, you can actually look at Memorial Park, and you can see everything. I've had quite a few people say, boy, I didn't even realize there was lights around the fountain. But we will put a tree back in there at some point. All Seasons was around yesterday, did all of our weeding, flowering, mulching, did an excellent job, I thought. So we're, we're moving forward with that. Down at the Y by AMF, where there used to be tons of weeds, shrubs, whatever. We removed those last year. This year, we have decided that the area in the middle is gonna be all concrete. We purchased two, or three, three flowering pots, so there'll be three in there. And we're looking into some type of small umbrella tree to put in the middle of it, something that's not gonna impede traffic, sight vision, or sight distance. And so we're, we're moving ahead, hopefully making the village look a lot better. That's all I have to do.
Village attorney, do you have anything? We haven't gone over?
Yeah, I have nothing else.
I have one item I'd like to suggest to the board. A few years ago. We prohibited signage up there where the fountain is, that little village green part. And looking at the way we did the law, it wouldn't be that hard to, we'd have to do a public hearing again and change the law, but it wouldn't be that hard to redraft it. But I think we should also include the four corners, the new lot. Excuse me. Some lights? I'm thinking we should include that lot down there, the four-corner lot, make no signage on that. One thing that will probably be happening within the next week or two down there, there will be two more or less permanent signs installed. We have them back. The BPW crew's gonna go down there, set a couple cotton sonnets, so we can mount these in concrete. Basically, what we have is informational signs that are gonna go in down there. One's gonna go on the State Street side. They're gonna be, they'll be sitting about like this. They're twenty-four by thirty-six, enclosed with plexiglass. The one on the State Street side is gonna show kind of what that corner looked like back in the early nineteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds. It's got some pictures of the fire that happened in nineteen ninety-nine, and narration under each of the pictures explaining, explaining what businesses were there back in nineteen ninety-nine that were lost. And then on the Dayton Street side, we're going to put another one, and that one basically shows how the project came together with a few pictures of the actual construction. And then there's a list on that of all the local people that donated to help make that part happen. And so that should be getting installed within the next week or two. But then, so I'm thinking we're gonna have plenty of signs on that, on that little corner that we don't need a bunch of other ones. So I'd just like the board's approval to get Joe to revamp our existing law to include that one. I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are, but I just think we're getting back into, we just wanna start having more barbecues and garage sales and things. We don't need to corner a quarter up as much as.
Which I agree with totally, but, but what happens when somebody legitimately wants to put something there, like they did for the COVID thing with the rivers and stuff like that? What do you?
That have, they have to come before the board, and we have to approve it.
Okay.
What about down there at the Y where Paul's working there, there's always a ton of signs there too. That's something you wanna address. Because I know that's been an issue before, people putting stuff up there.
Well, we could do the same. We could include that with the four corners, if you thought we should. But I'm just bringing it up, because one of the big things is garage sales.
But then you get, you get also fire departments and stuff that are having barbecues that also have signs down there too. They're only there for a day or two, you know what I mean, and they're gone, so.
Well, that's what you could do, you could limit how long the sign's gonna be there. I would imagine now that there's, that's gonna be all concrete, that you'll see more signs down there.
That's what I'm thinking, like you try by once and.
Yeah.
One of the concerns I have, first off, I always, I think we ought to take the sign on, run it out the front door, because I can remember Mark Giebel saying, don't devise them, because it won't before, before staying where he got it. The Bay doesn't have one, and I can think he's right. The other thing that concerns me is, they put these wooden signs up, and you get a fifty mile an hour wind, and it goes through a windshield, you got a problem. Number three, when I wrote the state about that, sent a certified letter, because I was concerned, yeah, Dan, you're right, there's not supposed to be any signs in there on the state right away unless they're on breakaway stuff. And I says, well, Flat Rock Inn is putting a sign up all the time, a huge wood sign.
Right.
I said that could blow, you know, the small fuck chicken barbecue sites, they're not gonna probably hurt anything, but when you get these big wood sites and you get a thirty, forty, fifty mile an hour windstorm, you got a problem. But if the state didn't, I got the certified letter, and I figured, well, the state didn't want to enforce it, it was in there right away. Somebody gets hurt, there's a lot of, so.
Well, Martinsburg Fire Department uses that way, but too, because they have official eyes.
I'm not saying you guys are there. I mean, I agree with it with the Monument Park, you know, it's probably should be, no.
And probably four corners.
Yeah, and four corners, so maybe you can let that go down there if the state's okay with it.
GW's Monument Park for their barbecues on a Friday, you know. I, I keep that, and these clubs are trying to survive.
So if you just wanna, do those too, I'm in favor of that.
Me too.
And forget about the Y for now.
Can you update that for us, Joe, on the four corners?
Yeah. Yeah, send, send me what you've got, Joe, if you would.
Basically, it's section one thirty-two dash five, signage in village green prohibited.
Okay.
Basically, the four-corner slot, the official name for that lot area is Village of Lawville Lions Park. And so I would think the new wording should not only list the village green, but list the four corners as a, a village of Lawville Lions Park, no, no signage.
Okay.
It should be pretty simple, I think, to change that one, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it drafted and send it over to you, Joe.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Court treasurer, anything?
No.
Chief of police?
Nothing.
Superintendent, do you have anything more?
The only other thing I had is Memorial, Memorial Day week, will be the last week of spring cleanup. But we will still be going around every two weeks, and the guys, if they see a pile, they'll pick it up. That's it.
Capital Future Planet?
Nothing, I don't know.
Personnel?
No report?
I'm sorry?
No report? No reporter?
No.
No, no, no personnel? Yeah.
I got one here named us. Oh, something acting up on me tonight. I think I gotta change the filter on it. Finance?
The audits are complete through February for the office.
And through January for the judge, so you're ahead of me right now, but I'm hoping that I have those.
Fire department, anything?
I attended their meeting. The meeting was just basic stuff. Fire department continues to function at a very good rate, level, as far as I'm concerned. Mr. Austin's here. I don't know if he has anything he wants to add or bring up to the board.
Oh, good.
That's my report.
Police department, you have anything, Kevin?
No, Randy.
Randy says no.
The only thing I have on the police department, I know we had some talk a couple meetings back. About plate reader?
Oh, yeah.
For the board's information, we just received a brand-new plate reader this week, and Randy's making arrangements to get it installed.
Without the, without the, so we'll be on run and trying to do, find, do you find some money in your back pocket or something, Randy? Have we purchased that? Doesn't matter, I'm glad we got it.
One thing I forgot to bring up is the crosswalk by the comments, I had a little issue with that at home, and so you, Joe. Yeah, so I'm, Mark O'Connor, I contacted him, and he would like an email from, in order for them to investigate it, he would like an email from a village official. I guess it can just be me, or Joe, or whoever, basically stating that we've had some issues there, close calls, and then he will send it on to safety and traffic or whatever, so they can look into it. I know Paul said that he thinks the striking might be a little bit off there or should be changed, so maybe we can get something done. I don't know if we couldn't get some of them crosswalk signs from them, possibly, I don't know.
I think the way it's set up now with that, that little one that gets hit all the time, and we talked about it, I think the way it's set up now, it prevents people from going into that center turn lane before the crosswalk, and I think that's what needs to happen.
That's what happened. I missed it. You're almost got nailed there.
I know that little crosswalk thing likes to get hit, right, Randy?
Yes, it does, that's why they look the way they do.
But it does protect that crosswalk, cause now people have to drive off past the crosswalk number that go into the turn.
So I can go ahead and send Mark.
You've already talked to him, right?
I've talked to him, yeah. He thought I should bring it in front of the board first, and I almost forgot.
Possibility, I don't know what's involved with it, is possibly have a signal crosswalk.
Well, I talked about that too, but he called it something, these mid, mid something crosswalks, he said it really tough. Because, you know, they're between lights and that's what you get, people moving into that turning lane ahead of time.
Well, like I was telling Tim, my thought would be to do crosshatching there, and make the commons so people can't turn into the commons there, they have to go up Elm Street and go into the commons. I mean, that would stop the problem, but.
Well, I think this instance, this driver was coming north, basically, and it was a box truck, and turned right into that turning lane, because you can see the light ahead, you know what I mean, you can see you gotta turn, if you're going up twelve, you know what I mean? And he turned right into that, yeah. So they should be waiting, and sometimes it depends on traffic. If traffic's backed up there, you're gonna turn in there a little bit quicker, you know?
But like I said, if you could run, run the crosshatching and block that area out, up to the crosswalk, you know, and just maybe a little past the crosswalk.
On both directions.
Well, if that somewhat deters people from doing it.
Well, with the email, I will probably refer your name in there to.
Why, thank you.
Me of contact. See how you're knowledgeable.
Yeah, not my job.
Anyway, I'll go ahead and do that, I'll get an email tomorrow.
I'm just wondering, should we, should we make a motion for Tim to go ahead and do that, so there's something official in our?
I'll get the motion.
I mean, in case the state wants to check, we got something official? Second?
No.
Call favor? All right, Planning Board and Zoning Board, anything there?
Campaign plans going pretty well, I missed the Planning Board and ZBA Board, did I miss anything, Henry? Still on Zoom, or was it in person? Planning Board?
It was on Zoom last.
Zoom, that's what I thought.
Yeah, next week is Zoom again.
Yeah. I think I got a ballgame, but, yeah, but campaign plans moving along. Nothing really to create your report.
Municipal Board, anything?
We, most everything was discussed earlier that went out of the municipal board meeting.
About the town, anything there?
Well, they talked about the marijuana thing, and they're, I think they're gonna opt out, so.
I think they got a public hearing on it tomorrow.
Yep. And I'll get on that via Zoom probably, or maybe in person.
County?
I've been in this, I didn't attend their meeting next month, I hope to attend because COVID's pretty much been really I'm working with Mr. Shatrin concerning our water money, I think you're gonna see that again.
Recreation, I think we already discussed most of it, but anything additional? Anything on Rico?
Yeah, they did have a meeting last night.
They had a call, Mickey, I'll tell you about it, but they had a call for that trail project. Highland Planning, and Brooklyn Lejudas talked about what they're doing, and it was a good, I mean, it was a good presentation, they they spent a lot of time in the beginning talking about the overall plan, starting at the city and going to Lawville, Lawville I mentioned several times. They talked a little bit about, I, I, these people aren't from around here, so that, you know, somebody mentions Harings, they don't know what Harings is, the ferry, they mispronounce it, but, but, you know, they're, they're hitting all the villages, hitting all the spots in between. The plan that Martin Lejudas spoke most about, the second half of the meeting, was the one from south side of Black River, through Black River over to goes around outside of Fort Drum over to Great Bend. And I didn't know it, but I guess they built a museum over there, on that's between Great Bend and Fort Drum. You know, the bridge they built across the highway, the, what is it, twenty-six, that runs between the airfield and the condoma area, that, they built a bridge overpass there. That museum must be going in that area somewhere, and that's where the trail is leading to, around the village of Black River, to that area. And that's this priority phase, they call it, and then from there, we'll know Carthage and Lawville, you know, I mean, there's a lot of missing pieces in between here. But they talked about it, they talked about it several times, and Mickey was on there, and mentioned a potential project, and Mickey filled in a lot of the gaps, right? How do you get from Great Bend to Carthage? Well, you go through Harings. There's a bunch of money doing, the cleanup of that site, and the town of Willna's talking about trying to make that into a park. They've, they've seeked, they're seeking some funding for that. Well, now you have a destination, right? Now you have a reason to build a trail from, from Great Bend to Harings. And that gets it that much closer, right? And you do the same thing in the ferry, you do the same thing at the Long Falls Park, is another area in Carthage. The town of Willna and the village created that park that's right on the river there, next in front of their old Rite Aid. The town of Willna owns some property that's up the river slightly, so they, they're talking about extending a boardwalk through there. So that would be another destination that would be on this link from Great Bend, which they're going after money for, they're actively going after that money. And there's a lot of missing pieces between here and there, but that's, that's kind of the route they're headed is build, build that first section of trail, try to find some money to put some destinations in between here and there, and that's how you'll, that's how you'll get this project built at some point, is going one step at a time, and it's, you gotta connect those dots. Nothing was mentioned about the the pedal bikes, pedal cars, nothing about that. But they, you know, they, it looks looks like they're doing pretty good. They had four alternatives they presented about the project around Black River, different ways to get there, different number of property owners, different, you know, they're looking at all this, all this stuff of how difficult it would be. It's one thing to run it, obviously they don't wanna run it down Route Three, but that's the easiest way. But then, cause you're only dealing with one property owner, which would be the state, right? But they don't wanna do that, there's better ways to get there along the river, and and there's some, some key property owners that they can do, two or three property owners, J C I D A being one, National Grid being another. Those types of landowners are probably much more agreeable to a project like that, so that was the that seems to be the challenge that they're putting up there, is getting the property owners in, engaged in line to say, yes, it's okay, you know?
This is Mickey too, I see.
Yeah, go ahead, Mickey.
I was just gonna say, I know Tim was over there and did the tour there of the depot with the developer that's looking to do it. Want me to go ahead, or?
Cut down a little bit, Mickey.
Tim, did you want to talk about the depot tour, or do you, or do you wanna do it?
Well, you go ahead if we can hear you.
Yeah, yeah, I keep hearing the echo, however. Like, pick up a bit. Both, with Rock Cotty, we had, also, we had Wayne McBoys from the village of Carthage, and we had Randy Shell from the town, and Tim from the village there. And it sounds like he's looking to do, he said he has to get all the equipment from Lawville to Crowgan to free up the stuff that he wants to bring in, like pedal cars and stuff to Lawville, to that building. But he wants to do it by rail, he said there's like four spots on the rail. Our executive director, Paige, she was all, and she was trying to get from, oh, what does need there's like four things, things that need to be done to the railroad. And, but at this point, we asked him if he had a long-term lease yet, and he said, no, he does not have a long-term signed agreement for a lease on the railroad tracks yet for the company. He said something about having, get what the company's gonna want to offset their taxes, and then that will be the lease fee or something there, so. So. But, you know, like, he kept, there's been a couple of things, but I don't know if there's really a plan yet, I'm getting it going, so. So that's kind of what I took out, I don't know, Tim, did I miss anything related to that?
Well, I think you're right, I don't think he really has a plan, he, he basically I asked him, I don't know if anybody else heard it, but I asked him how long it would take to get this project going, if, you know, what's the timeline here, and his answer was that he, I said, he said, oh, a month or so, I said, so is that with contractors? He said, yeah, with, or no, he said, no, that's, that's just if I did it myself with a few workers. He said, and just a week or two, if, if I got some contractors or could pay contractors to clean the tracks and do what they had to do. But his wording after that didn't really reflect that. He didn't really answer, did he, Mickey, on whether it was gonna happen this year, or when it was gonna happen, there didn't seem to be a time.
No. No, he didn't really give a time frame, so I guess you can be cautiously optimistic, but.
I wouldn't hold my breath.
But, yeah, I mean, so that was basically it, you know, as far as the railroad bed, and then and then then with the clean energy community stuff, I was just gonna mention related to that, that we are continuing to put the other workshops at the ANCA, there'll be one coming up in June here, passing out the information once I get it from them. We're gonna try to walk through the community step by step, as far as with the clean energy community process to get these grants. And just like Lawville versus its position pretty well, with doing LED lighting and stuff to get points for that, so you can go after the point based grant they're out there. And so with that, I think the next workshop they're gonna do is energy benchmarking, which it says kind of some low lying group that communities can do to earn more points. Basically, the more points you earn, the more grant money you can kind of go after. And then also they're gonna talk about electric vehicle charging stations, and there is money sometimes available for these action items to, you know, install electric vehicle charging stations, and then there's one other component, I cannot remember it right now off my head here, but but anyways, that's what we'll kind of be working on with the RACAG group, even though it won't be meeting, there'll be workshops going on, they're gonna take clean energy companies, and they're gonna take a break from and we'll reconvene. Unless something moves forward with the LED lighting, then we will probably reconvene again a little bit related to that, when it gets ready for construction. That's all I have, I guess, Tim, is there anything else you wanna add related to RACAG?
No, I don't think so. Those cars, he had, he had two different types of cars, one was a four-seater, one was a two-seater. So you're going, say, from Lawville to Crowgan, you get there and he's got these things that lift him up and turn him around and send you back. But I didn't ask the question, what happens if you meet somebody in the middle, you know what I'm saying?
Have you ever done it in?
No.
In?
Well, I only do it there.
Where's it set at, Lake? Tendere? Tendere, yeah. You were following, so the guy heads out with a a little car that's like the size of a lawnmower, and, but it goes fast, and and he has behind that is a, no different than a hay wagon, with a bench seat in it on both sides. He heads out, so he's out of the way, he's gone. And then another guy that stays back at the shop or whatever, he sends him out one at a time, so you can see the guy in front of you. And so it's, you know, they let, they let him out, so you're out getting there, you know?
So you can only go one way.
Right, you only go one way, and then what they did there, and they didn't have a thing to pick him up, they just, we went to a, it was a house, it was a road crossing. Got to the road crossing, and, and he just bulldogged him out of the way and turned his machine around and.
I didn't see his turnaround thing, that's what he told me.
And, and he, like you said, it was like a lawnmower, like one of those trucks with the wheels that go down, so he drove that off and turned around and and then dragged us all back in the hay wagon, and we all sat in the hay wagon to go the other way, to go back. So, yeah, it wasn't like a loop, you're gonna hike, you're going around in a circle, you, you go one way and, and you're following somebody. And they, they space them out, so, you know, and they're not, it's not like it's easy to do, so you're not gonna catch somebody, you know, and go by, and obviously you're not going to buy them, so. It was fun, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's not something I'm gonna do every weekend.
I kind of wondered about that, how, you know, for the local people, it's a tourist draw, that's for sure.
Yeah, and, and, you know, area like Tendere, and even here, right, I mean, you'll get people that'll, that'll do it, and, and they I go to Old Forge, you know, once a year, like everybody else, and, and, you know, so I, we did it one time, and the next time we didn't, you know? So, yeah, it was, it was, it was neat to do, but it's not something I'm gonna do every year, but but it sounds a little bit different, it sounds like he has an easier way to get them turned around, and then you do go back, it sounds like, you know?
What he did say was that the rail company has no interest in a biking and walking trail on their property, right, Mickey? I think that's pretty much what he told us.
And it, they're open to non-motorized activity, but they don't want to tear the railroad tracks up, so anything they got put in would have to be where they put like stone or something down along the tracks, or something like that, that could be taken back up, but they they, they were in favor of non-motorized recreation on the trail, but they also want to leave the tracks in place.
Okay, moving on. Public comment, anybody have anything for public comment?
Are you going to say anything tonight?
I'm gonna have my time.
Okay. I got a couple of things. Paul? About two weeks ago, I saw a state DOT guy walking Bosswick Street, kind of looking at where they had put down the bicycle path striking last year. Has Ms. McDonald got anything back to you on that, because that looked like he was doing so that we gave back that on our side of the street, where you can keep your vehicles inside the line instead of being over?
I've not heard of her.
No? Yeah, it was a DOT guy, and it looked like he was looking at the striking, the way it was. And the other thing is the park in front of the Presbyterian Church. The day the tree came down, I thought it was because of Joe, because he hates Christmas trees, I thought, and that's why he took it down. Then I found out the reason why it came down. When it's all done, I would hope, and I'd like to see the village kind of get the TV people and get it out, because the park certainly is gonna look really nice when it's done now, and a remark about people, people don't even pay any attention to it, but you hear people saying that, I didn't even know there was lights, lights on the trees, or it was lit up even with it, but I think it will make the park look a lot better. Yep, that's it.
Anybody else have any public comment? Okay, we need to go into executive session to discuss contracts, I believe. You still with us, Joe?
I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Call favor?
Aye.
Is there something tomorrow night with this Friends of the River thing here?
Yes, that's fine, Mickey.